All right, call this meeting for the mayor and council August 12th, 2025. Got invocation by Dr. Israel Barsh followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen.
Let us pray. Now to him that sits on the throne and unto the Lamb, him alone, we give you praise and we give you worship. We welcome you mighty Holy Spirit that you would consume this council, that you would send the anointing of power with anointing of wisdom and strength upon each one of the council, God, this power of merit upon this gathering, that your will be done, that you commission your angels to send them here as council. God concern this administration, let your protocol, your procedures, God, be according to your acts and according to your word. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
All right, I believe councils had the minutes sent to them from July 22nd. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Pass unanimously. We have employee recognitions. We got the marketing and communications intern, Ms. Leila Bailey.
I'd like to introduce Leila Bailey, who is our marketing and communications intern. We're very proud of her. She is a LaGrange High School graduate. She went, she is currently in the University of Pennsylvania, enrolled. She's a rising sophomore with a double major of communications and political science, and she spent the summer with us, and we're very proud of her. She's going to tell us a little bit more about what she learned.
I would like to begin by saying that I'm incredibly grateful to have had the opportunity to intern with the city of LaGrange this summer under Katie Van Shor in the marketing and communications department. I enjoyed being able to come back and work with people I met during my time in youth council and meet new people who helped make this internship a memorable experience. During my internship, I learned about the work that goes into maintaining communications with people, businesses, and organizations throughout the city. I also helped create flyers and social media posts, learned how to create news releases, improved my photography skills, and even helped with some youth council plans for the upcoming year. Outside of the marketing and communications department, I was able to shadow the city manager and assistant city manager, where I learned more about city operations and city projects, including the city budget and the comprehensive plan. I also shadowed the city attorney, who taught me more about the legal aspects of city operations and gave me insight into his experience as an attorney, which I really appreciated as a pre-law student. I even spent time at both the police department and the fire department, where I learned more about the role of first responders in keeping our community safe. In summary, I've learned a lot, not just about marketing and communications, but also about city management, local government, law, and even public safety. I also participated in multiple community events, including the mayor's reading club events, which personally were my favorite because they allowed me to see LaGrange's diverse citizens as well as the city's commitment to coming up with innovative and exciting educational opportunities for the younger generation. Lastly, I appreciate how much everyone at City Hall has supported me over the summer. Not only did my mentors help me thrive during this internship, they were determined to set me up for success in future roles as well. Currently, I'm preparing to head back to Philadelphia to begin my second year of college, but I'm leaving knowing that I'm always welcome back at City Hall for whatever, whenever. Thank you so much to everyone I had the pleasure of working with or meeting during my time here, including Katie Van Shor, Adam Spees, Olivia Johnson, Philip Sledge, Bill Bullock, Patrick Bowie, Jeff Todd, Melissa Robertson, Mary Arington, and city council. Again, this internship has truly been a memorable experience, and hopefully I'll have a chance to work with each of you again in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Leila, we appreciate you choosing LaGrange to do your internship. Okay. Moving along, we got public hearing to rezone property located at 1201 Third Avenue from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood mixed use.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised. We'll take any comments at this time.
All right, is there anyone in council chambers that wants to speak for or against this rezoning? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. We ought to have a second public hearing to rezone property located at 102 Clark Street from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood mixed use.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, this public hearing has been properly advertised. We'll take any comments at this time.
Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak for or against this rezoning at 102 Clark Street? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Petitions and communications, acceptance of streets and infrastructure within Crossvine Village Phase B, A, yeah, whatever that one is. Six. Six, eight. Yeah, I get it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Excuse me. Consistent with our conversation earlier this morning, we're here to ask you all to accept certain streets within the Crossvine Village, Phase 6A, and also the infrastructure there. We did talk about this this morning.
All right. Second. Got a motion in a second to approve? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, the same. All right, passes unanimously. We've got a, I'm gonna put my glasses on this time. We got a board of planning and zoning recommendation on a request to rezone 8.9 acres located at 25 Robertson Street and 119 Raglan Street from CPGB to TNMX and to amend the comprehensive plan character area map.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As we discussed this morning during the work session, yesterday, members of our planning commission unanimously recommended that parcels located at 25 Robertson Street and 118 Raglan Street be rezoned from campus general business to traditional neighborhood mixed use. This rezoning will also require an amendment to our comprehensive plan character area map. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action open for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September the 9th.
Move we call for a public hearing? Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, is he here?
Um, I think I seen him come in the door. Yes. You got a question?
I do.
Okay.
Oh, you want for the step back now?
Oh, no, he can come on up here to the microphone. I didn't know if it was for him.
Yeah, I got a little bit of your plan this morning, so I just had, you know, maybe one or two additional questions. Uh, are these going to be homes, apartments?
They're multifamily apartment units.
Okay, apartment units. All apartments?
Yeah, there are four different buildings, 101 units.
Okay, okay. And what percentage is that, which you say is going to be affordable?
100%. That, 100% of it will be affordable to those earning 80% of the area median income or under.
I just want confirmation. That's all I got for you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Okay.
Either, either one, uh, is this right next to the pickleball courts across the street?
Councilman Gore, uh, yes, sir, it is. It's just north of the Active Life Center. Uh, so if you're looking north on Raglan Street, the pickleball courts will be on your right. Active Life will be on your left. Just past the Active Life Center is the parcel 25 Robertson Street and 118 Raglan Street.
And this doesn't involve the solitary home that's still on the right-hand side of the road?
No, sir, it does not.
And, um, is there, is there any sort of trend nationally about people living near pickleball courts?
That, Dr. Gore, I could not answer.
I've kind of heard that in Florida, it's kind of a problem because there's so much noise. You get a bunch of courts, and everybody's playing if it's outdoor.
Yes, sir.
I think this is outdoor. It's a lot, a lot of noise.
Well, we'll certainly make sure that the developers are aware of that.
Is, is, well, we, we could hear from the, the senior center because it'd be next door. They'd have a right to speak, right?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Public hearing will help with that.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any more discussion?
Okay.
All right, uh, all in favor say aye. All opposed, the same. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
City manager report.
I think we've got the brunch, oh, that's later, I'm sorry. Yes, one, one quick item. Um, we have some police vehicles that we want to dispose of through GovDeals, as was presented by our purchasing manager at the work session, and so you have that list before you. We would entertain a motion to declare them surplus and allow us to dispose of them.
Motion to declare surplus?
Second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, the same. Pass unanimously.
Thank you, we'll take care of it. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Under resolutions, we got the brunch bill resolution.
Yes, as, as discussed in the work session, this is the resolution that will allow the referendum on the brunch bill for the voters to decide in November.
Take motion in the, motion in a second for the brunch bill to be put on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Anybody got any questions, discussion?
That's to the brunch, that's to say, oh, alcohol for?
In restaurants.
In restaurant, after what time?
Before 12:00, between, starting at 11:00. Starting at 11:00.
But it's currently what?
12:30.
12:30, so we want to move it to 11:00?
Just in restaurants.
Just in restaurants.
Well, we're not moving it, we're putting it on the ballot.
We're putting it on the ballot for the voters to decide.
For the voters to decide. Okay, okay, okay.
So, um, just to clarify, so, once it's voted on, it, it could become law as a, as a referendum?
In November, yes.
Yeah, beyond the, it'd be on the ballot in November, and I assume it would be?
You'll have, um, if it passes, you'll need to pass an ordinance authorizing those hours. But that won't take long.
Semantically, if it goes on the ballot, is that an ordinance or a law?
Um, what happens, you're authorized by the resolution and the referendum to have the authority then to pass an ordinance, so it'll still require your actions.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion?
All in favor say aye. All opposed, the same. Pass unanimously.
All right, we got funding for the DA and the juvenile prosecutor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve additional funding from our contingency fund that we've had set aside during our budget approval, um, for the $200,000 for nonprofits. We would like to take, I would like to make the motion that we take $100,000 and award that to the district attorney's office for assistance with prosecutors here in Troup County. And additionally, we would like to award $12,000 to the juvenile office, prosecutor's office, and an additional 12, uh, 10,000, $12,000 to the mental health court system. And those will be the same as were funded prior to last year, if approved.
Okay. I got a motion. Mental health was actually 20 last year? I mean, I'm fine with 12.
I think, I think, I'm gonna make the motion for 12, same as the juvenile.
So I got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this?
Yes, the funding for the DA office, that's nonprofit funding, we can fund the DA's office, nonprofit funding?
Yes, we were asked that question this morning.
Yes, that money's set aside for your decision to use however you want to use it.
But, so, so I know the juvenile and the mental health court, that's like nonprofit, I didn't know the DA's office, we could take that, but we can't?
It's, it's your funding.
Yeah, we're taking that, our funding, it's the taxpayers' funds, that we're taking and giving it to nonprofits.
It's your decision.
It's not necessarily set aside for nonprofits, it's we set it aside to make it.
I wasn't under the impression this morning that we were, that we were taking the 100,000 from that 200, but that's your motion.
Well, that's a motion, but we can, I'll just, I wouldn't put out, if, if we decide that we need more money for the nonprofits, then we'll, then that would be for us up to then go to the city manager and try to find the money, and we'll have to amend the budget. This way, we won't have to amend the budget, right?
No, sir. Well, you are, you are basically reallocating the money, but you can do that.
Okay.
You certainly have the authority to do that.
I'm not.
Well, we, I can withdraw the motion, it is, it's fine, I mean.
So, I mean, I understand everyone's apprehension about funding the DA's office versus the nonprofits. But, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out. We just had a shooting before we got in this chamber. We just had a shooting on Hill Street. Stop the posturing, stop the, we have to establish priorities. Safety, security, and stability of this community must come first. Damn everyone else. We got, what's that was going to cuss? We have to set our priorities in order. Safety comes first. 36,000 people, we've got shootouts happening in the middle of the streets. This is like Gaza.
I'm not, I was, was not indicating that I didn't think that this.
I'm not saying that you are, but the apprehension that we're pulling money from nonprofits to give to the DA, no, we're taking money out of the nonprofit category to be, be replaced at a later time to expedite getting the money to the DA so we can have, stop having a war zone in our street.
It don't matter to me how we get the money.
It's the taxpayer's money, it doesn't matter.
This morning, we just said we were going to fund it, and we did not say how, so now is our discussion of how.
Just to clear the record.
That brings me to my other question that I asked Jeff Todd. How difficult would it be for us to open back up negotiations with the county and the other cities just regarding funding for the DA's office?
Yeah, I, I don't think that's best discussed tonight.
I mean, I, I mean.
It takes, everybody would have to agree to only do it for that little one slice. It's a much, it's a much bigger thing to consider than.
But moving forward in the future, we could.
We could, yes.
This is a one-time thing. I'm, I'm looking at this moving money around as a one-time thing so we can set up something permanent later on, which you probably should have been.
I'll say this, just, it, the pot of money belongs to the taxpayers. It doesn't matter if it comes out of this 200,000 that we have already got set aside that's just sitting there, or if we amend the budget. I mean, we can amend the budget today, or we can amend it when we need more money from the nonprofits.
You're in a sense amending the budget because you're directing that money.
We can amend it again.
Yes, you can amend it as many times as you want to amend.
So it, it will, it will come down to, do you, do you want to just go ahead and approve it now, the money's there, or do you want to approve it to make him go try to find the money somewhere else, other than that basket of money of 200,000? That's, that's, I guess, the question.
That's right.
So, when you, when you said 12,000, uh, were you just trying to basically match what the juvenile prosecutors were getting when it comes to mental health?
Right, well, the information I got is that the mental, mental court may not even have to have this money, but I think Councilman Charles was very adamant that he wanted them to have it, so I was trying to.
Well, that, that's why I asked that because I know we, you know, got some insight in regards to them needing that, you know.
Well, do we want to hold off on that now?
Let me clarify something.
It's up to the council. I, I just think that if they received 20,000 before, that they should get 20,000 now because of the severity of mental health within the community.
Right, Quay. But, and I'll add to that, though, is the information, the information I received that they were going to be fine not getting any money.
That's what I was told when I met with them.
Um, so you understand where I'm?
Uh, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I got, I got the same intel that Quay got, that they definitely, definitely need that money.
Maybe we just need to hold off on them until they come see us.
But I want to clarify something, though. Nobody is in apprehension of giving our officers, our DA or whatever, the tools they need to fight crime. I know you want to see the valley going, don't you? You do too, don't you? You do too, don't you? You do too, don't you? Everybody out here do. So let's stop making any wild accusations to my, to my being apprehensive about giving funding to something. We trying to figure out where we want these funding to come from. That's what we're talking about, but ain't nobody appreh, apprehension, though. Second of all.
True.
Second of all, so it's 20,000 for mental health, it's 20,000 for juvenile, Quay, it's 100,000 for the DA, so that's 124,000. So that's only going to leave 60, 76,000 left for nonprofits.
For now.
So that's what I say, I, I don't.
So, my response to, my response to the response would be, to quote what you said earlier, put your money where your mouth is. When you voted for this budget, you put your money where your mouth was.
This ain't exactly your money.
And that was to pull the 100,000 from the district attorney's office.
I, I, I didn't vote for it.
So, Mayor. I, I disagree with that, sir.
I, I didn't vote for it.
I would say that that is not true.
Okay.
I didn't vote for it.
I ask the city manager.
Yes, sir.
If we didn't give you any specific directions on where to pull the money from, what would you do?
That was my question.
I can't spend money that you don't direct me to spend, so I really need you to tell me. It'd have to come out of contingency, but that's all you have to tell me, that you'd like to take it out of contingency. I'd rather not be picking accounts without your.
If we want to put money back in the nonprofit account, all we have to do is officially amend the budget, go back to our contingency fund and add the money, because we haven't decided how we're going to do it yet.
That's right.
But what we have decided is that the crime has reached a level in the community that we have to do something post haste.
Is there any time difference in whether we decide that it's going to come out of the contingency tonight, or whether we decide that it's going to come out of the already allocated 200,000?
Just when we write the check, we just need to know.
Right, so there's not a time difference in our vote on the method that we do it. And, I mean, that's, that's what I was going to say, if it was faster to do it one way than the other, and that's not what I'm.
I'm looking at this young lady over here, if it was pre-law, I just don't want her to be in law school when we're doing this. And it needs to be done now.
Can I ask something from you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have the, um, mental health court advocate here tonight. Would you, if, if it is your pleasure, can we have her come up and briefly explain?
I would like to hear it.
Why the importance?
Sure. I would like to hear it.
Evening.
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 How are you?
Hello.
Um, I did come to speak, um, so our 20,000 dollars that, dollars that the city do provide for us goes to our operating funds. When I spoke with, um, Mr. Patrick, I don't know, Bowie, Mr. Bowie, um, we discussed that our funds are, um, offset by some of our date funds, but those funds are also limited. So what the city, um, donates to our program significantly helps our, um, operating as far as our case manager, um, salary, a portion of that, it goes to the treatment for our participants, transportation for our participants, drug screening for our participants. Um, also, just as our mental health court, we have staff members from the DA's office, the solicitor's office, um, the public defender's office, both state and superior, myself the coordinator and the case manager, so we, they all sit on that, and we meet every two weeks, including our judge. So those things help manage the mental health, um, individuals that have been sentenced to our program. Um, I did look up some data for you guys. Currently, within the city of LaGrange, we have 64 accountability court participants that live within the city, that either have a mental health diagnosis or a substance abuse, um, disorder. Also, 14 of those have strictly mental health, and I think the donation that you guys provide or the funding that you guys provide to our program assists with them being managed by the people in our program, um, rather than the continued police contact and the continued, um, criminal actions that they would have within the city.
May I ask you your name one more time?
My name is Jasmine Johnson.
Jasmine. Uh, Ms. Johnson, just tell me what you need. Seriously.
$20,000.
You need 20 grand change, 20 grand, y'all.
Okay, so let's, let's not get hung up on where we're going to take it. Let's just give, let's, let's vote for the funds and take it from contingency and then deal with that.
I need to withdraw my motion, Mr. Todd, and then restate it.
I think at this point, it might be.
All right, I withdraw my motion for the 100,000, 12,000, and 12,000, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to re-make a motion that we approve, uh, 100,000 from contingency fund to the DA's office, 12,000 to the juvenile court office, prosecutor's office, um, and 20,000 to the mental health court. All out of the contingency fund.
The, the nonprofit?
Yes, that contingency fund, and then we will revisit that. Um, just for sake of time and sake of, we're going to fund it, I mean, there's no, no, no chance we're not going to fund these, so we'll come back and visit this.
As long as, you know, as long as we're sincere in what we're trying to do, we can make a mistake.
Yeah, and I, I know that, no one, no one is not wanting to fund it, so, or not, not fund it.
So I'm a little bit unclear again, I'm, I'm sorry, on the, on the motion. Is it coming out of the already allocated 200,000?
200,000.
And so we're getting a public commitment here that we're going to go back and authorize the budget to go back to the 200,000, because the next thing that's going to happen is we're going to be getting all the nonprofits in here because their budgets have all been cut this year as well. So I want to be sure we're all on the same page because I'm not going to be a fan of reducing the overall contributions that we need to the agencies that are doing all of the important work with the youth, with the arts, with all of the different things that are also equally important to try to be reducing the crime in the city from the front end, rather than trying to find, I'll be finished in just a minute.
Absolutely.
From the back end. So I just want to be clear that that's where we are.
You want to be clear that we're going to go back and put that money back?
Yeah, I mean, that's my, that's, we've already decided on, I mean, that's my concern is that everybody's going to just have a big fight over.
Question for Patrick was, was the 20,000, 12,000 coming out of nonprofit money anyway before?
No, it was hidden in the police budget and the other contractual services.
But I think we moved, we moved them, I think we moved them from the nonprofit to the police department budget so that we didn't have to argue about all this every time. I mean, that's, that's why all this has come about.
I didn't know about it in my first budget that I did, I had to jump right into, and it was kind of in that other contractual services.
Don't you, do you remember that, Dr. Gore?
I remember that. I will, but I think so. I remember it, also remember the fact that the reason they were able to do it was because we had funds that were at the police department for lines that were unfilled, so they had excess money. And that may be the same thing this go round, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think we're up to.
For short 12 officers.
So, so let me ask city manager another question. If we don't take this out of the contingency funds, where would you get the 100,000?
It'd come out of reserves.
Reserves. So we can either do it out of reserves now and still have the contingency there, or we can take it out of.
What would you rather us do, sir?
It's totally.
It's totally up to us, he's not.
I mean, I don't like giving them, city money like.
So he's not, he's not the guy to ask that question. But this is what I'm telling you guys, we're only doing this because we're in a state of emergency. I think we all can agree. The money can be replaced in the nonprofit fund from other avenues.
Anywhere.
At a later time. We're just trying to get this done now, and the money will be put back, whether it comes from the police department, who has lines unfulfilled, budget, budgetary, well, how far along in the budget are we? How many months, we're one quarter in?
We just finished July, so we're just now into the second month.
Okay, so.
It's early, it's early in the budget.
We're into the second month, and there's a portion of money that was set aside for salaries that is unused.
So what we can do is if, Darby, if you want to make another motion.
Let me just withdraw my motion again. We'll just let, we'll just let them make the motions that they want to make. If you don't agree with me, then vote no. I'm, I'm just, y'all making this harder than it is. It's all city taxpayer money. It's all city taxpayer money, don't matter where it comes from. It comes from everybody that has a power bill and everybody pays taxes. It don't matter. So I withdraw my motion, and y'all can make the motion however you want to make it, and let's fund it and get on with our business.
The, the mental health court, the DA's office...
The motion's withdrawn, the motion's withdrawn, make the motion.
They're, they're all important, but we trying to get you to understand that those nonprofits...
Y'all just wanna argue that too, for some reason.
I was just trying to clarify what the motion was.
We've argued enough today, just ma, the motion's withdrawn, if you got a motion, make it.
So I would like to make a motion that we fund the district attorney's office, one hundred thousand dollars. We fund mental court, twenty K, we fund juvenile court, twelve K. And let's just let that motion stand, wherever the money comes from, at the discretion of, via this conversation, through the mayor, to Patrick Bowie, pull the money out, make it happen, and we'll come back to the nonprofit status, and we will make that hold at a later date.
So leave the two hundred for the nonprofits.
Let us all also be reminded that we do have an obligation to the nonprofits, because it is in the budget.
Okay, I, I, I understand all that, uh... I just wanna make this absolutely clear, because I've, I've been real aggressive all day.
Yeah.
I've been real aggressive all day, and I just wanna make this absolutely clear. This is why I say you're being apprehensive, because we've been arguing about this all frigging day.
No, sir, I agree with you, Councilman Gaskin, all I'm saying is, is that we still have an obligation to the nonprofits as well. We still are going to attack the state of emergency, but what I'm saying is, is we have to make sure that we fulfill our duties and doing what we say we're gonna do with the nonprofits at a later time.
And I'm sure, y'all...
When have we never fulfilled our...
I didn't say that, sir. I was just, I was just saying this, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna go through. I'm gonna say this, I've been, this is ten years I've been doing this, and when we get to the nonprofit fund, and you watch what I'm telling you, that two hundred thousand dollars ain't gonna be enough, 'cause you gonna have a lot more people out there begging for money, and every time, every time, it goes over, and we have to amend it anyway, so just watch what I'm telling you. It's coming.
Okay, alright, can we get the motion?
I can second, I can second, second.
So that is that motion to give me discretion of where the money's coming from, is that what I heard, Nathan?
Yes.
Councilman Gaskins?
I second his motion.
And to assure that the nonprofits gotta get their money.
Yes.
Okay. We're taking it out of contingency, is what I hear, out of, out of the reserves.
You guys discussed that at a later time.
No, that's really not an option.
Yeah, we need to...
Go figure it out. It's, is it coming out of...
So if you're, if I got the discretion, it's gonna come out of reserves, the hundred thousand is gonna come out of reserves.
Well, then that just needs to be the motion in the vote.
And the juvenile court, and...
I withdraw my motion. I'd like to resubmit my motion. Hundred thousand dollars out of reserve, twelve thousand dollars out of, uh, for juvenile court, yeah, for juvenile court, and ten, twenty thousand dollars for mental court out of reserve.
Perfect, got it, I second the motion.
Satisfied? Everybody satisfied? Nobody's apprehensive?
Any more discussion?
Not apprehensive at all.
Second.
I got a motion in a second, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, passes unanimously. Oh, Lord. Alright, we got a sidewalk installation on Revest Street.
Yes, as discussed, uh, during the work session, um, we're proposing to put about a thousand feet of sidewalk on Revest Street from Daniel Street down to the thread, in conjunction with, uh, some construction that's going on over there by the housing authority.
Motion for sidewalk on Revest Street.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Alright, let's, let's back up. All in, all in favor, raise your right hand.
All in favor.
Two, three, four. All opposed, raise your right hand.
No.
Four to two.
So I'd like to raise this left hand, does that count?
I'd like to make...
I buy both hands.
Mayor, I'd like to explain why I'm saying no, because we've had two other people, uh, groups that have, are building, uh, properties, that have asked for funding for their, for one of their businesses, and we're stepping ahead of them with this, uh, decision.
It's not fair, it's not fair.
It's noted.
I, I would just like to add, though, since he added, that that group has been stepped ahead a whole lot of times. Why, I've been on the count for the last three years, a whole lot of times.
So...
Call a question?
Okay.
Question?
Call the question, let's call the vote.
Oh, I did. It's four to two.
I just wanted to clarify that you may feel like this group is being stepped ahead, but I feel it's something more nefarious than that. I really, truly do feel like the influence is damn near criminal as to what's taking place here. We are talking about an agency that has not submitted to their board canceled checks. They have not been compliant. You've had board member, since I've been on the council for eight years, every single year, a board member has resigned. May I finish? A board member has resigned.
Your allegations come here each and every day. What's your proof?
Alright.
When you say something, you gotta start bringing proof.
Alright.
What's your proof?
This order, let's, let's move along, we're not, this is not making...
We want proof, though, he made allegation, what, what proof?
This is not a court, I'm not, this is not a court, this is, one against the other, and that's all I can see.
Anybody in this office, anywhere, if somebody make an allegation against you, you gonna say, prove it. What's your proof? So guess what I want today?
I was always taught that a hit dog is gonna holler. I was always taught that a hit dog is gonna holler. If you feel some type of way, you feel some type of way.
I want you to prove it.
Alright, we're, we're gonna move on. We got first readings, we got the first reading, the rezoned property located at twelve oh one Third Avenue from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood and mixed use.
An ordinance to the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Third Avenue and owned by Susan Marshall to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second, first reading, the rezoned property located at one oh two Clark Street from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood and mixed use.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Clark Street and owned by Dr. Regie to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Naming certain streets within Crossvine Village, Phase Six A.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the code so as to name certain streets in Crossvine Village subdivision to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
No second reading ordinances, uh, board and agency appointments, La Grange, Troup County Hospital Authority, three-year term to succeed Joel Upchurch.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Tripp Penn to replace Joel Upchurch.
Um, so what, what we have to do on this appointment is, uh, submit them three names and they...
Who are the three?
Patrick and Bill.